...in order. Can anybody rise to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to be the reorganization meeting in the room. The board members can take a role. Mr. Semenaro.
Here.
Mr. Shaheen here. And Mr. Potts.
Here.
Okay. We're going to go through the process of reorganization. I'm just going to explain a little bit how we're going to go through the process, a little different than what was done in the past. In the past, when we called for a president or vice president, the first name that was heard was the name that we voted on first, and if they did not get a majority, it was the second name. We're going to change it up to follow our policy, where we'll take nominations, and then we will do a ballot roll call vote in alphabetical order by last name, announcing who you would like to vote for, for both president and vice president, as well as secretary and treasurer in the future. That's how our policy is written, and that's how we should be doing it, and we decided to follow that process. Are there any questions? Okay. Any comment on the agenda? No? The first step, the first process of the reorganization meeting is the election of a temporary president. Anybody can nominate a temporary president. We don't need a first or a second motion, it's just a nomination. At that point there, that person will take over the meeting. It needs to be one of the three of us holdover members, because we're the only people that are sitting, so either Mr. Potts, or Mr. Semenaro, or myself. And we'll go from there. So do I have nominations for temporary board president?
I would nominate Mr. Semenaro.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Shaheen.
Motion to close? He's seconded. I guess we've got a vote out. Okay. Mr. Potts.
We are voting.
On temporary president, as far as names.
Him or me?
Him or me. Semenaro? Mr. Semenaro?
Mr. Shaheen.
Okay. Mr. Semenaro. So, your temporary board president.
Nice.
The paper's civil.
So, the next, can you pass this down to Mr. Semenaro? And you got to give him the certificates of election.
You need, just read this.
The whole thing?
No, just read the first paragraph, and then who they are, and basically determine where they go.
Yeah, the whole thing. As a result of the votes cast at the November 8, 2011 municipal election, I hereby certify that the following individuals have been elected to the following offices. Region 1 for a four-year term, Connor Kurtz. Region 2, four-year term, there were two, Robert McLaughlin and Andrew Basil. Region 3, there was a four-year term, vote for two, Kevin McCullough and Monica Hammel. And a two-year term vote for one, which was Michael Wolf. Now, can we just go forward with the, I'm sorry. Yep. Okay. Those board members all stand, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. If I could just take a moment, on behalf of the district, to welcome you all aboard, you're now official.
Welcome. So, welcome. Thank you.
Now, the reaffirmation of the oath of office.
We did.
To re, for ourselves.
You did.
We're okay.
You're good.
Next on the agenda is the nominations of the election of a board president for a one year term, from December 1, 2011, to December 1, 2012. Do I have any nominations for president?
I nominate Mr. Shaheen.
I nominate Mr. Basil.
Motion to close? Second.
Okay. Motion is closed. We will take a roll call in order. I don't have the names of the people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll do it in alphabetical order by last name. And again, it's name vote, it's not yes or no, it would be a purchase day. Two candidates for president are Mr. Shaheen and Mr. Basil. Mr. Basil.
Basil.
And Mr. Semenaro.
Mr. Basil.
Mrs. Hammel.
Mr. Basil.
Mr. Kurtz.
Mr. Basil.
Mr. McCullough. Mr. Shaheen. Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Basil.
And Mr. Potts.
Mr. Shaheen.
And Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Shaheen.
It is 5-4, Mr. Basil wins. Congratulations, Mr. Basil.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Do I continue through?
No.
What do you do?
Mr. Basil will take over.
Okay, so we're going to take nominations for the election of board vice president for one year term. We're going to follow the same procedure that we just followed for the nominations and elections of a board president. So I'd like to hear any nominations for a vice president.
I nominate Mr. Shaheen.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, there's no other nominations?
We need a motion to close?
Yes. Okay, let's do the roll call vote.
Got it?
Who's the second?
Mr. Potts was the second. Okay, we'll go, Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Shaheen.
Okay, the next one on the list is the appointment of a legislative action representative. Mr. Shaheen, would you like to just sort of discuss what that role has been for you, so that the new board members have an opportunity to?
Well, it's a position where you're communicating on a monthly basis, and anywhere out of Harrisburg as far as budgets, laws, bills that are in front of the House or in front of the Senate that affect the school district. Sometimes there's nothing, and sometimes there's a significant amount of stuff that comes out. We all get emails from PSBA about legislative stuff, but again, it's just a quick summary that I do on a monthly basis.
Okay. All right, so everybody understands what that position entails? Do we have a, any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Shaheen.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close? I nominate Mr. Kurtz.
It's two. Any other nominations?
Motion to close?
Motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
This is for a legislator representative. It was, oh, I'm sorry, there are two candidates.
Yep, Mr. Shaheen.
I'm sorry, two candidates are Mr. Shaheen and Mr. Kurtz, so we'll do it by name of the person. Mrs. Hammel?
Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Kurtz?
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. McCullough? Mr. Shaheen. Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Potts?
Mr. Kurtz.
Mr. Shaheen?
Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. Semenaro?
Mr. Shaheen.
And Mr. Basil.
Mr. Shaheen.
Congratulations, Mr. Shaheen, you retain that seat.
Okay. The next one is the appointment of a PA school board's representative. Who was sitting in that seat?
I have.
You were. Okay. Mr. Potts, would you like to sort of tell everyone?
Basically, the same thing, the liaison's working with Harrisburg. You're going to get tons of email, some good, some garbage once in a while. You have to decipher through that. Obviously, you can go in there and you will get a monthly magazine, or I think a quarter, and obviously, filter through this and bring some stuff back, or some attention items that Dr. Otto would, would be part of his tool, maybe to operate the.
Okay. All right. Any nominations for the PA school board's representative?
I nominate Mr. Potts. Motion to close? Second.
Okay.
Okay. There's only one candidate for PSA, PSBA member. Mr. Kurtz will be a yes or no vote, please.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, I'm sorry, for Mr. Potts.
Potts.
Yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Potts, you retain that.
Moving on, the appointment of a Berks EIT representative. I sat on this board for the last couple of years now, I think for the last three years. Basically, for those of you who don't know, the Berks EIT is the tax collection entity for the school districts and municipalities of Berks County. You sit on a board with generally 23 to 28 other representatives from different municipalities and school districts, and monitor the tax collection policies and procedures, and the dollars that come through, and are dispersed to the different entities, municipal entities. I think it's a great networking opportunity. You get to sit down, talk to school board members that sit in different school districts about school board issues, and I found it to be a very rewarding experience. So, it may sound a little boring, but the, I think you learn quite a bit. And it only meets four times a year, they meet quarterly on a Tuesday night, and so it's not like it's a lot of, a big time obligation on your part, but it is a good networking opportunity. So if anybody's interested in doing that, I really encourage you to do so. Having said that, do we have any nominations for Berks EIT representative?
I nominate Mr. Kurtz. I decline.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Basil.
I'll accept it if there's no other nominations, but I truly would like to see somebody else, if they're interested. Take it, Mr. Wolf? I'd like to nominate Mr. Wolf.
Then you're declining your?
I decline mine, yes. If Mr. Wolf is willing to accept the nomination, I'd like to decline.
Motion to close?
A second?
Okay, great. Mr. McCullough?
I'm sorry, who was first and second?
I was the first.
Okay.
I close.
Okay.
I'm breaking.
Thank you, sorry. This is for the Berks EIT representative for one year. Mr. McCullough, yes. This is for Mr. Wolf, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
And Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Wolf.
And Mr. Basil, on the next item, number 11 here?
Yes. Oh, 12?
Number 12 on this sheet versus number 12 on our agenda. What do you have next?
I've got BCTC next.
Because I've got appointment of vocational tech on this sheet here, so.
Yeah, I think it's the same.
Again, I don't see BCTC on this agenda at all.
Right. Right. So, it's the, the next one we have is the appointment of the Berks Career and Technology Center representative.
Three-year term.
It's a, yeah, it's a three-year term. Essentially, it's the VOTEC arm of the school district, if you're not aware of that. They do some pretty amazing things up there at that building. Our students are doing, learning the culinary arts, they're learning to work on automobiles, they're learning electrical engineering, or electric, electrical work, plumbing, home construction, masonry. Am I leaving anything out? It's, it's a pretty impressive facility, and quite frankly, the board members who have sat on that seat and been involved, really enjoy going to those meetings and learning more and more about what the BCTC offers our students.
They had a nice tour, what, two years ago?
Yeah, I think we should do that again.
So they're outside Ole. Try to get that done again, because that would be really eye-opening.
And they actually are part of our budget. We have the budget for the students.
We actually held a meeting here.
Right, right.
We held a meeting in the boardroom.
I nominate Mr. Wolf.
Okay. Any other nominations for this position?
I nominate Mr. Kurtz. I decline again.
Okay.
Motion to close? Second.
Okay. This is for BCTC, for a three-year term. It is for Mr. Wolf. And Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Wolf.
Just as an aside, I believe, we refer to that as the JOC briefs and whatnot during our meetings, and they meet monthly. I'm not sure which date it is, but they do meet monthly. I actually had a question about, oh, here's the alternative representative, that was my question. If, if the appointed representative can't make a meeting, we have a second board member who will stand in their stead. And so that's what we're going to vote on next, which is the appointment of a Berks Career and Technology Center alternative representative from the school district. So, in the event that Mr. Wolf had some other obligation, couldn't make the JOC meeting, that, that board member would step up and, and attend the meeting in his stead.
I nominate Mrs. Hammel.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close? Second.
Okay.
Okay, this is for BCTC alternative. Candidate is Mrs. Hammel. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. Hammel.
Okay, moving on, the appointment of a Berks County intermediate unit representative. BCIU provides quite a bit of support to the school district. Maybe, Mr. Otto, or Dr. Otto, you can elaborate on, not only do we do a lot of bidding and whatnot through there, but they provide a lot of services to our special needs population.
They primarily help with, we run monthly superintendent meetings, all of the legislative initiatives that are going on around the state come through the IU, special ed programming. We actually have an agreement, as many of you know, with the IU here in our district, with our transition house up at the high school. They are generally an intermediate service organization that serves our needs as a liaison between what goes on at PDE and filters down through the district. There are 16 schools that are part of the BCIU. Reading and Muhlenberg have their own jointure for their own, or, excuse me, Reading and Muhlenberg, that's for the VOTEC, are also part of that. So all the schools in the county are represented at the BCIU for a lot of different matters. They have their own board meetings, and a lot of the issues that come to this board are brought back to us from our representative that goes to those BCIU meetings. Extremely important in terms of, a lot of what we do goes hand in glove with what happens at the BCIU.
Okay.
Adding, seek preapproval, I nominate Mr. Kurtz.
I would second that nomination.
Motion to close? Second.
Okay. So this is for the BCIU rep, it is Mr. Kurtz. Nominee, Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Kurtz.
Okay, moving on, the appointment of the VOTEC School Operating Committee member.
Just want to interject a little bit here. There is a gentleman that was appointed to this prior, prior to, I think, my coming here, who was not a board member.
Yeah, I mean, this is new.
This is the first. I don't remember this position.
His name is Tom Kirkner. I was wondering if anybody that's on, that's been on the board, recognize his name.
He was on the board, I know. He is now affiliated with the Optimist Club.
He's the president now.
The president of the Optimist Club.
I'm not sure we received notification from them that, that that term was running out, and that he was the person on it, but I didn't recognize his name as ever, having been on this board while I've been here.
Not to mention ever.
It's a familiar term, so.
But he never made a report.
At least twice since I've been on the board, and I don't remember.
Do you remember a report from the gentleman?
No.
No, I haven't received no notification.
I don't know.
We would have, I would maybe bring this back in the committee, or at the voting meeting. We could do this again.
All right, we'll bring this one back. We'll table this one and bring it back until we understand what this is and where we're going with it. I've never heard of it in the four years I've been here, so.
We have it on the table.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we do need a motion to table, and.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. On to 16, appointment of the Daniel Boone Foundation Committee Representative. I'm the current representative, was the current representative for this. Ms. Vasette was the representative prior. Unfortunately, the foundation hasn't met in the last 12 months, and that's not to say that they won't meet going forward. I think the foundation's, it's got a great purpose, that it can be served in the school district. We hope they will work hand in glove with the REC committee on some of the initiatives that the Revenue Enhancement Committee is trying to push forward. So, I'll just throw that there, and if anybody else wants it.
If Mr. McLaughlin doesn't get off scot-free, I'm going to nominate him for this position.
Okay, great. All right.
Motion to close? Second.
Okay. And this is for the Daniel Boone Foundation. Mr. McLaughlin is the nominee. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay, the next one is the Economic Revitalization Advisory Group. Currently, this is an ad hoc committee, where two of the members are still on that committee. We look for a board member, one from each municipality. We are seeking the Birdsborough representative for the Economic Revitalization Advisory Group.
So, excuse me, we're only filling?
Only filling the Birdsborough position.
It's an ad hoc, it's an ad hoc committee.
It's an ad hoc committee, so it doesn't really dissolve, we just need to fill until we, until we dissolve it as a board, so we're just filling a vacancy, because Ms.
Tordowski.
For the current, sorry, for the new board members, we need to still have representatives from.
So, yeah, originally, it was designed to meet, to create a forum where the school district and Amity Township, Birdsborough and Union Township could collaborate on ideas and ways that we might incent businesses to come to the school district, or, and develop the school district in a way that would allow for more tax revenues and more growth, but not in the residential area, so to speak, where we'd have to be building more schools and things of that nature. So, we only had a couple of meetings, I think two.
We did go to the county building for a presentation.
Right. The Amity Township has a couple of plans that they are trying to get the county behind in terms of some industrial and office parks that they're looking to develop, and they wanted the support of the other municipalities in the school district. We went to those court hearings and provided that support to get the county behind their initiative. And we've also had a couple of meetings about what we could do vis a vis school taxes as an incentive for businesses to move into the, into the area and things of that nature. So, the committee hasn't met in several months, but we've got some things on our agenda concerning redistricting and things of that nature. So, we do need to meet and, and push that forward. So, if there's anybody who would like, from Birdsborough, to sit on that?
Well, first of all, who are the Amity and Union?
I'm the Amity, and Mr. Basil is the Union Township.
Okay, just for your record, okay, just want to make sure.
I nominate Mrs. Hammel.
Okay. Do we have any?
I nominate Mr. McCullough.
All right.
I nominate Mr. McCullough.
Okay, so there's two. Right, did he make it?
Well, we had a motion to close, did you want to pull that motion back?
I didn't get it seconded.
Nobody seconded it, okay, great.
So there's two, there's a.
Mr. McCullough and Miss Hammel.
Yeah, we have a motion to close.
Motion to close.
I'm sorry, who's second? This is for the Birdsborough rep of the Economic Revitalization Committee. There, you'll have to name the person, because there are two candidates, Mrs. Hammel or Mr. McCullough. Mr. Semenaro?
Mrs. Hammel.
Mrs. Hammel?
Mrs. Hammel.
Mr. Kurtz?
Mr. McCullough.
Mr. McCullough, Mr. McCullough, Mr. McLaughlin?
Mrs. Hammel.
Okay?
Mrs. Hamel.
Thank you. Mr. Potts?
Mr. McCullough.
Mr. Sheehan?
Mr. McCullough.
Mr. Wolf?
Mr. McCullough.
And Mr. Basil?
Mrs. Hamel.
Congratulations, Mr. McCullough.
There you go. All right. Okay, so now we need to do the authorization of the board officers to sign checks and continue to use the present signature stamp until a new one can be made, if necessary. I don't think we need to do anything here.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote.
And this is for, I'm going to be sure.
Really going to have to make a play for Mr. McCullough, right?
Right.
One.
Because you're the only one.
Because you're the only one.
You're the only one that's changed.
Mrs. Facet's still being used.
Until tonight.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Hamels?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Okay, we have authorization.
Okay. Moving on to 19. Committee appointments. Pursuant to policy 005, the president will remind all board members who desire to participate on a standing committee to make their desires known to him or her by the January committee of the whole meeting. So, we've got five standing committees. We will have five by the time we get to January. And we've reviewed with you guys individually what, what those committees do, but if you have any questions or concerns or whatever, feel free to ask other board members of the superintendent what those roles of those committees are and, and, you know, throw your hat in the ring. I will be sending you emails requesting that you give me your top three choices in order on which committees you want to be a part of, and, and then we'll sort that out in, in January. We'll, I'll present those committee selections to the group as a whole, and then the group as a whole votes on either approving or not approving those selections for those committees.
And that's just, like I said, if you don't send an email, you're going to be put on a committee.
Yeah, by default, I'll start picking names.
And don't complain that you got to put on a committee you didn't want to be on, because it's by default, every one of us is going to be on a minimum of two committees. Some of us are three committees, just to get it around, so.
Which?
Using four committee members?
You can have as little as three, and we've had as many as four.
Typically, we're four, but we need two at every meeting to be able to hold a committee.
A little tight with just three.
Right, because, yeah. So, we like to have four, and if, you know, we need a minimum of two. So, if only one can make it, then it's not a committee meeting. It needs to, the meeting needs to be canceled.
If, if, I can just interject. Remember, we had started to establish kind of standing meeting dates.
Right.
If you're going to maintain them, it might be helpful to the new board members to know what night it might be, based on their personal schedules as well.
Well, they can move those, but as, as they see fit, I guess, Mr. Basil, the chair will sit with them and determine whether that night is still a good night.
Okay.
But, you know, in the past, two years ago, it was, well, let's have the meeting next week. You know, now, I know, I can tell you, curriculum committee meeting is the first Thursday of every month. I can plan it, you know, members can plan it, public can plan it. It's in place, it's always there. Finance committee meetings for the committee of the whole. Buildings and ground is between the committee of the whole and the voting meeting.
First Wednesday, I think, or what it was.
Whatever.
Second, second Monday, or first Monday.
Second Monday.
First Monday.
Revenue enhancements meeting, like the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday.
Those things are subject to change, depending on who sits on what committee, because everybody's schedules are going to determine ultimately where these things, where these, when and where these committees meet. So, don't feel like that's the case, but we are trying to get the committees to meet on a standing date every month, so that everybody can kind of coordinate their schedules around that. Just makes things a little bit easier. Okay?
And, and if there's nothing to talk about, you just don't have to meet.
Right.
I mean, you canceled the, the curriculum committee for, because it would've been tonight.
For those of you who are new, we can say who the committee chairs were.
Yeah.
I'm the committee chair of the Revenue Enhancement Committee, so if you need to, if you need to have more information of what that committee is and what it does, give me a call.
I'm the curriculum instruction chair.
And I'm sitting on the finance committee. Mr. Potts is on the buildings and grounds.
And as the last standing member of the meet and discuss committee, I guess I'm the.
Well, and that's, I will be making some appointments between now and January for the meet and discuss, because Mr. Sheehan's all by himself, and, and I think curriculum is also missing someone, and the finance committee's missing someone. So, and.
Finance can survive.
It can survive, but if somebody wants to sit on there for the next meeting, you know, it's, it's open, so.
Well, I, I would like, and again, the board can decide to say yes or no, but I would like you to, I don't want to push you to do it, but I'd like somebody on the meet and discuss.
ASAP.
If you do it tonight, because there are some things coming up that we may need to address, and I'd like to be able to, to, if I have to call a meeting, call a meeting.
Right.
So, I don't have a problem helping out, if you need to do that.
Okay. So, people let me know, you know, if you want to be on one of these committees, and then I'll start just appointing folks to fill the slots until we get to January, okay? I mean, there aren't going to be that many meetings. I mean, we do have a Buildings and Grounds meeting coming up, and there'll be a Revenue Enhancement, and there'll be another Finance Committee. Actually, everyone's going to meet at least one, maybe even two more times.
Before the voting meeting, yeah.
It'll be, some of them happening this month and some happening in January, before we actually start voting on things.
We're going to postpone the upcoming facilities till January.
Okay.
I believe the Revenue Enhancement's going to go on hiatus for the month as well. I don't want to speak for the chair, but we had that discussion already.
Okay. All right. So, that takes care of number 20. So, just email me with, with some ideas of, of who wants to sit where, and we'll start placing some folks on, in the empty slots. All right. And I'll get that done tonight.
I would like to try to get somebody.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Yeah.
For this other one.
I would volunteer for meet and discuss. I would as well.
Okay.
If anybody has any problems, there's four members there that we could agree.
But is it under the same understanding that that's not a permanent commitment?
No, 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 it's just till January.
Because there are other board members of Michael, who are new ones, and think about it, and it has to be on the committee.
Just until we reset it, during the voting meeting in January.
Okay, okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure that it's clear.
Yep.
Will there be a curriculum and curriculum committee meeting?
January, the first Thursday in January.
Okay, and that will be with, because we won't have the names of the new members?
It'll be with the previous.
January 5th, I think, is the first Thursday.
But there's two slots open on the CNI committee, right?
One.
Mr. Basil and Mr. Tordowski.
Yes. No, Mr. Ross and Mr. Tordowski.
Yeah, so you got Potts. Potts and Sheehan are on.
So, I need two for that one.
Two bodies for that one. So, just let me know who wants to go to that.
Maybe for one meeting or?
Temporary, I'll do it if you want.
I'd like to do it too.
If anybody has.
Again, temporary.
Yeah, it's just, it's just for one meeting. So, Mr. McCullough, Mr. Kurtz, on, and then.
You got everything?
Okay. All right. Any comments by the board on anything?
Yes.
All right. So, I'll make a comment. I just want to welcome all the new board members to your seats. I think it's going to be an exciting year, and we really appreciate everybody stepping up and, and running. It's, it's sometimes it's a very thankless job, but it's an important one, and we really appreciate all your input in the meetings. And don't be shy to ask questions and slow us down if you have a question about anything that you see on an agenda or a process or procedure that we're following, so that we can explain that, and you're, you're making informed decisions on the matters that, that are before the district. Okay? So, again, thank you for, for running and sacrificing the time from your families and your friends to be here. It's an important job.
Again, one other, it sounds a stupid question. Everybody comfortable with their seats, based on hearing, seeing, you have other people. This is the time where you reshuffle seats. You know, it's kind of weird, but everybody happy where they're sitting next to, they can hear, see the audience.
Well, it's about time.
Not one I can help.
Usually, I think, I think alternating new and old board members.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just asking because.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I have a problem with this chair. It squeaks.
I've got it. I've got the worst.
I just want to make sure everybody can see and hear everybody else appropriately.
Okay.
And Mr. Scher, we used to put his chair all the way down to the floor at every meeting, and it used to drive me nuts.
Okay, any comments from the superintendent?
Absolutely. First of all, thank you to all of the members of the board. Congratulations. But, let me stop. Thank you for your service to the community. I think sometimes I'll say it in a little bit different way than you did. That gets overlooked. It is a thankless job. Comes with, obviously, you all know, no pay, and a lot of time and a lot of effort. So, again, it's, it's what I like to consider the, the last true form of grassroots political involvement left in the United States of America. So, congratulations to you for wanting to be a part of that, and I think it's a very important thing you do in, in service to probably, again, our most important asset in the community, and that's our, our children. So, thank you in advance for all that you're going to do for the students. I just wanted to make a comment for the, the board. As the sitting members, you're aware, we've developed our board orientation plan, new board member orientation plan. I've already spent the afternoon with Mrs. Hamel. We took her around, even though she's been to some of the buildings. She had never seen Manocasie, so we took her around to see some of the APC and some of the other buildings. She actually got to walk out onto the stadium floor this afternoon. So, we had a nice afternoon, and I have other activities scheduled for other new board members. And again, as I've already said to you, just keep in touch with me, and we'll keep that process moving forward. So, trying to get off on a good start for you, so you understand what's about to come in, in the critical next six months as we get into the budget and things like that, so.
I think the biggest point, and we didn't have much when I joined, is the new board members, if you got a question, pick the phone up. I mean, I think we need to redistribute a new phone directory for everybody, but don't be afraid to call and ask.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that now, so we're.
Otherwise, and the other thing is, be real careful what you say, because a lot of times, what you may say is determined to be board opinion versus your opinion. So, be careful with emails and be careful with comments, because it'll be misconstrued as, as the board's opinion versus the person's. And then, we have no one.
So, welcome.
Okay, yep.
Welcome.
Any comments from the public? Mr. Schott?
Tom Schatt, 7/29, Secretary in Birdsboro, higher than the theater. I also want to thank the newly elected board members for their week. Also, those are their return. It is a thankless job, but I really appreciate the time you put in. Mr. Basil, I have a question under 19. According to your policies, according to, uh, board members give you committees they want to be on, and then you make that decision, and then the board reaffirms that, is correct, how it happens?
Well, the board members provide us with their selections, and then the board president makes decisions as to who sits on what committees, and will appoint a chairman to those committees, and then provides that information back out to the board for their approval.
Can I come a little more clear? You make the recommendations to the board, the rest of the board on the committees, the committees that are voted on, then you pick the president, the chairman of the four that are going to nominate.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but.
He's correct, that's correct.
He gets to pick the nominations, then the board gets to decide, the meeting in January.
And then the chairman's decided by the president.
Once the committees are set, then Mr. Basil gets to pick the chairman.
Okay. I guess.
Sorry.
That's the policy, the way it is now.
Yes.
I'm sort of seeing a lag time, and maybe something we'll work out between now and next year. My opinion would be, they would get you the names as soon as possible in December, and then we'll have a voting meeting in December, and do the appointment. Part of the reason is, for example, the state is just up your time when you're, when you're talking to finance. And, and I just see a lag time there. I don't think under your[1591.45]